Hey, good evening, everyone. Good to see people. I'm just checking to see if we have our board present here and then I'll kick off the meeting. I see this board. I see Dr. Reed. I believe that's it for right this moment, so we'll give it another minute. Okay, I think we're just gonna get started here. Again, it's a special meeting. My name's Laura Capps and it's nice to welcome everybody. December 1st, the first day of December, I hope that everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I'd like to first turn it over as I open up this meeting to our Spanish interpreter, Ms. Rubacalva, to please introduce that for our participants.
Thank you, Board President Capps. Good evening, everybody. We will have simultaneous bidirectional interpretation into English and Spanish. So if you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, I will invite you to click on the globe interpretation at the bottom right of your screen and select English as your language. And if you are using an iPad or a phone or a different device, then you will see a three-dot menu at the top right of your screen. So I will invite you to click on that and select Language Interpretation and click English and Done. Muy buenas noches. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted gusta escuchar la interpretación al español y si está usando su computadora, va a haber un icono en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación". Haga clic ahí, seleccione español y eso va a activar la interpretación. Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, puede usted localizar el menu de tres puntos, hacer clic ahí, seleccionar "Interpretación de idiomas", o si está en inglés, dice "Language Interpretation", y luego hacer clic en donde dice "Done" o "Aceptar" para activar la interpretación. Y también vamos a poner las instrucciones en el chat. All right, are there any questions with regards to interpretation? If there are no questions, then I will go ahead and ask the host to assign myself as the interpreter and also An Alex Diaz as the second interpreter. And we may begin. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our interpreters. With that, I'm going to ask Dr. Wagnick to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Maybe she's, maybe I put her on the spot there.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Wagnick, and again, welcome everybody to this special board meeting. Just to give some context, it's December 1st. Our next regular meeting is not until December 15th, but given the daily changes that we are all experiencing with our COVID numbers, we wanted to have the chance to check in with the board. And by the board, that means the public, because again, we are that link between the public. And so that's what this meeting is about. I'm so grateful to the professionals, all of you professionals, but especially to Dr. Lynn Fitzgibbons of Cottage for being here and to Dr. Dodds from the County Public Health and always, as always, Susan Klein Rothschild, who has been such a staple and huge asset to this entire ordeal. I'll use the word ordeal that we are all undertaking. And so really tonight, this is a one-topic special meeting. The public was invited to participate, and I know we have one speaker, but really it's for, for us to hear the latest and have a presentation and then discuss the question before us is what to do now, now that we're in purple? And what does that mean moving forward with plans for January, knowing that being nimble is all part of this? So with that, I am going to turn it over to our, to Mr. Hugh. I believe she's here in order to have our pub, one public comment speaker first, and then we'll dive into the presentation.
Actually, it's Ms. Garcia who is here in lieu of Ms. Trigill.
Thanks, Ms. Garcia. Apologize for that.
Thank you, President Capps. We have one speaker. Her name is Roseanne Crawford. Let me find her so I can unmute.
I believe this is on a non-agenda item, so this is a public comment. So she'll have three minutes. And then we will dive into our one and only agenda item, which is the recommendation for what to do in the purple tier at this present moment.
Ms. Crawford, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. One more time, we've missed the boat here. This board should have been all over the waiver process in September. I listened to the Board of Supervisors update today on COVID. Dr. Ray Noosso clearly said it was unlikely that any waivers would be issued in the purple tier, that it's cohorts for now, so you're stuck in your cohorts there. On another note, showing how out of touch this board is, the disproportionate number of identified special needs children in Santa Barbara were misidentified because they were simply behind in their English. The meta-concept is a politically-driven ideological concept that will not promote equality or equity by denying English immersion to non-English speakers. Thank you for the opportunity to address my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. President Capps, that concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. So with that, we will move to item, it's B1. Having done items A1 through 4, and so that I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wagnick in Superintendent Maldonado's absence and hear from the staff and again, hear from our special guests from Cottage and from the county to update us. And then there'll be a chance for each and every board member to ask as many questions as we can. And then, and this is an action item to determine the next steps for the, for the remaining weeks of this, of this calendar year. So with that, Dr. Wagnick, please take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Capps, and good evening, Board. On behalf of Superintendent Maldonado, I want to thank you for being here tonight for this special board meeting. We've been through a lot together in the last eight months, committed to following the science in consultation with Santa Barbara County Public Health and our local experts. And as Ms. Capps mentioned tonight, you will hear guidance from two of our local experts as well as updates from district leadership. I want to commend the board as you continue to work with the superintendent and her staff in, in making these difficult decisions that, again, as Ms. Capps noted, it, things are rather nebulous and it's not always easy to, to know what the exact right thing is to do, but we continue to follow the science and be in consultation with the experts so that we can ensure the safety of all in Santa Barbara unified. So as trustees, your guidance to us tonight is invaluable. And I want to reassure you and our community that despite the current situation that our local community and our nation and the world finds itself in, we're going to continue to work with, with everyone locally so that we can open our doors safely and make that, continue to make that our number-one priority. Next slide, please, Mr. Rouse. So I'm not going to spend too much time on this very familiar slide, but just want to reassert that it is a balancing act between the public health guidance and our organizational structure. And as school leaders, we, we balance many factors. We follow the latest recommendations from County Public Health, the follow, the, the latest guidance from the state. The governor has been signaling a lot of changes lately, and so we're waiting to hear on those. But at the same time, we continue to follow our framework for safe campus reopening. And despite the current situation, we look to those drivers to continue working to reopen school when it can safely occur. And then we focus on the health and safety preparedness, our facilities capacity, our staffing availability, and then, of course, family choice for in-person and distance learning. The balance of all of these are really the key to our decision-making and our preparation. Next slide, Mr. Rouse. So as you recall, and as I have mentioned at least six times already, our reopening for schools is highly guided by the Center for, by, by the California Department of Education, the California Public Health Department and local county public health. So these are what define how we design our instructional delivery models, all of our policies and the practices that we need to follow in order to reopen. And we will continue to do so. At this time, I'll turn it over to Brian Rouse, who's going to review our re-entry timeline.
All right. So as we, this is the same slide we've pointed to before, but now just with some indication of where we are currently. So we provide information about hybrid schedules and parents have selected programs and received letters verifying their program selections. We're currently in the process of now using that information to build schedules and groups that we've used to launch with hybrid learning on January 19th, should we be in a position to do so. So this week, in anticipation of the, if we approve or the board approves us seeking a waiver to reopen elementary schools, we would give elementary families an opportunity to choose if they would like to remain in distance learning for the remainder of the school year rather than return in person under the purple tier. And the, the thought being that when people originally made those selections, they were expecting to return when we were in the red or orange tiers. And so now that we may be returning the purple tier if a waiver is approved, we wanted to give families an opportunity to choose to return, to, to remain in distance learning even if they previously selected in-person learning. So that's what's, what is up next on our timeline. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Dodds to speak about COVID rates in our county.
Good evening, everybody. So things are very different now than they were a couple of weeks ago when we originally had talked about having this meeting. The, the chart that's here is just a visual to help see what, what we mean by the, the tiers and the rates. And you can see, and I, Dr. Fitzgibbons is gonna address this a little bit more, a little bit later, but the concern, if you look at the far right of the curve, we were actually doing pretty well and almost in the orange for quite a while. But then in the last three weeks, our numbers have just shot up again and we're into the purple and well into the purple as of the numbers that were run yesterday. So COVID rates are increasing across the country and they're definitely increasing in the county. Me, sorry, my mouse is not working very well here. So right now in purple tier, we can have small cohorts. There's some questions about athletics and we're expecting that the guidance about athletics may change soon. So more to come on that. And I know you all have been working very hard on safety protocols for school. And so the question of what, which tier is safest for school reopening? It's actually a complicated question, as you all know. So if we were only to look at COVID, the safest tier would be yellow. But we know that there are other public health and educational issues that are also very important that are, that need to come into the mix in terms of making the decision. In terms of other public health matters, matters, things like childhood obesity, we're really concerned about, we're very concerned about mental health of the children. So it's not, it's, there's not a clear answer and it's almost, I think, an impossible decision. But just to go with what is the most, what makes the most sense, and it changes. We get new information all the time. The, some of the specific questions were about who, who makes the rules? And essentially, they come down to us from the California Department of Public Health. And we're actually allowed to make more stringent rules than they send us, but we can't be less stringent than what CDPH sends to us. And so, and, and I, I'm not sure if you all understand the tiers, but basically, the tiers are based on our positivity rate. So how many tests are positive? What is our new case rate? And this has changed a little bit. Originally, they looked at a two-week average. And now they're looking at its daily case rate for the last seven days average. So it's, it's essentially the same, but the number looks really a little bit different. Okay, can we have the next slide, please? Okay, so this is about an elementary waiver. So the question is, what's an elementary waiver? And basically, the schools can't be open in the purple tier unless you're in elementary school, so that would be K through 6 with a waiver that we, we would authorize. And the, there's a very specific process that we go through for the purple tier. I can't remember. Sorry, I'm not remembering which slide this is on. So I'll get a little bit more in detail in the next slide about what, what that process actually is. The thing that's changed to, as of today is because our threshold or seven-day average of new daily cases is over 14. At this point, we aren't even reviewing any waiver applications until that number drops down because CDPH won't approve those if the numbers are as high as they are right now in Santa Barbara County. The other thing about the school reopening is when we move out of the purple tier into the red tier, you need to wait 14 days until, until you can open the other schools. If the schools are already open, so, so for schools that had opened in the red tier, they can continue in, in-person learning, at least at this point. Next slide, please. Okay, so several questions about the waiver. Why can elementary apply for waiver only in the purple tier? The purple, the only people, the only students that can come to school in the purple tier are elementary students. And so the old secondary school can't get a waiver? And you only need a waiver in the purple tier because once you're in the red tier, all the schools can open if they choose to do so in either hybrid or full, full-time students. In terms of what we know about COVID and young children, the reason that the elementary waiver idea came up is that it, it looks like transmission in elementary schools is pretty low. So we know that young children can pass the virus along. We know that they can get the virus and we know that they can be asymptomatic. But if you look worldwide at school reopening, there, there have been a few outbreaks when schools have opened, but they've all been in secondary schools. And they followed this pretty closely, particularly in England, I think, is the most compelling data. They had two months in June and July where they pretty much opened schools again, but they followed all the public health guidelines and they were very careful about that. And they did not see school-based outbreaks, really. They saw cases in schools, of course, but it seemed to mirror what was happening in the community. So they didn't, it really didn't look like opening schools increased cases. There have been several cases worldwide of high schools and big outbreaks in high schools. But honestly, most of those were also when they weren't following the public health guidelines with masking and distancing. We did have some schools open in the county with waivers. And then we also, we had a few more schools that opened when we were in the red tier. And we, we really didn't see very much COVID in there. There were, there were cases in the schools and there were a few elementary schools that closed a cohort, so they didn't need to close the entire school, but they knew which students and faculty had been close to the index case and all of those people were to quarantine for 14 days. One high school closed, but that was a choice that they made. They only had one or two cases. So they closed for a couple of weeks. So the closures have been more, more conservative actually than, than what we necessarily would require. In terms of what advice we have for parents and staff, the biggest advice is follow the public health guidelines. So what we know is transmission in schools is more likely to come from a family member. So if, if the families can be following the public health guidelines, wearing masks, social distancing, only trying to have contact with people within their household, that's going to be the most important thing still. There's a question about, do we need to test students? And at this point, it's not currently recommended to test students routinely. Certainly, if someone has symptoms, we recommend testing for anybody that has symptoms. This recommendation might change, but at this point, we're not recommending that you test students routinely. How can contact tracing help us contain outbreaks? So contact tracing is basically figuring out if you have a case or a positive test in a person, who might have been around that person when they were contagious that now might have the virus that they could pass on. And we're actually asking for the schools that are open to help us with this because it's likely that the school would hear before the public health department hears about a positive case and can contact people as soon as possible to have them do the 14-day quarantine. There is a symptom protocol, and I think you probably have all seen it, but if you haven't yet, it's available on the Public Health Department website. So it says what to do in various situations. The next question is what priority, what teachers, will be given to teachers when the vaccines are administered? We also don't know the answer to this question, although we may hear this one pretty soon. The, excuse me. The decisions about who gets priority for the vaccine first come from the federal government. So they, there are two different groups that look at this and, and they're meeting, actually, I think, today and tomorrow to sort of figure this out. The, it's likely that the highest priority will go to healthcare workers that are working with COVID patients, which makes sense. They're the most likely to be exposed over and over again. And we really need all of the healthcare workers working so that we can take care of the people who are ill. The, what's up in the air a little bit, I think, is who's sort of the next group? And educators may well be in that group. We just don't know yet. So more to come on that, and that should actually, that information should be out fairly quickly. And then questions about vaccines for children. At this point, the studies have not included children. Pfizer, that, which is the vaccine that is likely to get approved for emergency use authorization first, just in October added 12-to-18-year-old group. So we don't have information about that group yet. We expect that the vaccine will be administered to children in their ways once they establish safety in adults, that they can fairly quickly look at children. But that's, that's going to be a little while before, before we get around to the children, I think. Let's see. Will the county be able to maintain contact tracing once the school district reopens? That's definitely the plan. That's the best way we have to contain the virus when we know that there are positive cases. So the requirements for waiver approvals and what are we looking for from the district for the waiver? There's a very specific set of things that we're looking at, most of which you've done. So most of what we're looking at is the, the industry guidance for school reopening and how well you're doing it. The specific things that we're, we're really focusing on is how are the schools trying to keep contacts at a minimum? So what's the plan to keep the fewest number of people in contact with each other as possible? So for example, if you have first-grade class with 15 children and one adult at lunch, at recess, bathroom time, they are not in contact with any other, with any other of the cohorts, any other of the small groups. And that will help minimize contact tracing. It will help minimize spread of the disease. And so that makes it easier. And this is another reason actually why the waivers are for elementary school and not secondary school. Because elementary school, it's relatively easy to keep a consistent group of kids together because that's how the classes work. You stay in the same class with the same teacher all day. Secondary school, you have movement between classes and teachers and that makes it actually much more complicated for this process. And I think that's the end of my slides.
You know, Dr. Dodds, thank you so much. I'm gonna do a little point of privilege here because I think what you conveyed, I, I don't think, what you conveyed was pretty much a showstopper by saying that the county is not even considering waivers. So if you could just unpack that for the public and for all of us to take in here. take in here before we proceed with all of the rest of the very important information, but really, this is the crux of this special meeting tonight. So please explain that, that you're not reviewing, you're not considering what's, what does that mean? What's the timeframe, etc.?
Yeah, well, and I just heard that, you know, a few hours ago, actually, that that had changed, that we'd gone above that number of fourteen, an average of fourteen cases per day for the last seven days. So so until we drop down below that number again, we're not going to consider any waivers because the CDPH won't approve them.
Understand. So does that mean? And and anyone else, any of your colleagues to weigh in here? Because again, I think all of the rest of the information is important, but I know that there's three hundred and fifty people on this this Zoom here that are anxious to know whether or not we're applying for a waiver or not. So if we could just stop and and get a little more clarity. So that means at this stage, if we were to apply, it would just be, it would just be tabled or what, what, and again, I understand that this is new information for you. And if Susan Klein Rothschild would like to weigh in or anyone else, please do.
Yeah, it looks like Susan does want to weigh in. At this point, what we're saying is we're not even going to accept the applications, which doesn't mean you shouldn't work on them, and they're all available. Everything's available there. So you could have everything ready to go. And as soon as we say, yeah, okay, we're open again, then go ahead and submit it. And I would recommend doing that, that there are a fair number of things you would need to you need to kind of get dialed in. And Susan, you said you had
I wanted to share, thank you very much. I just wanted to share that because the COVID case rate changes very quickly from week to week. And really, in a matter of days, that if the board would like to consider applying for a waiver in consultation with public health, that is, moving forward with an elementary school waiver application, and then when it is eligible to accept applications, according to where we are with the the case rate, then Santa Barbara Unified is ready to do so. If you make the decision when they're ready, it may change very quickly. The case rate is, we could see from the trends, go up and down. So if you make a decision ahead of time about how you'd like to proceed, and then when public health says now we are in a place where we can do that, then you're ready, you're ready to to act and take action when the the case rates are safe to do so.
And we can definitely send you the information, the kinds of things that almost all the waivers that we got, we needed to get more information. But there was actually a fair amount of consistency in what we were looking, what what wasn't present that we really needed to have clarified. So we can definitely put something together to to give you the best chance of not having to come back and revisit again.
Excellent. Thank you so much for clarifying this. And and I do think, again, this pause is important to just understand this. So it's not the situation where you would take an application and deny it, but rather you wouldn't even consider it at this, at the, given the data that exists currently, is, am I understanding that correctly?
That's my understanding of what Dr. Ansor said today. Yes.
Okay. And other board members on this critical point, if you'd like to weigh in, please do, because I think, again, this is the crux of this entire meeting. But I think that's important because earlier today, when I got, when I heard about the supervisors' meeting and what was conveyed, I thought, well, if we apply for a waiver and then we get rejected, is that then somehow put us back? And obviously, we're all trying to move, move forward as much and prudently as possible. So understanding the process, especially for the staff that have to apply for this waiver is critical.
Wait.
And I'm just getting word to to the chat here that our application is completed. So what would you advise, I guess, is a more concise way convey this? We we know the sentiment of, I mean, we all want kids to be back in class. We wanted to do it safely and our, I'm understanding that our application is completed. So what would you advise at this juncture?
At this point, my understanding is that we're not going to review the applications at all until we're back in the, back in the in the less than fourteen daily average. However, what I could do, and I'm happy to do, is to put together something that describes the kinds of things that have held the other waivers up so that you can review and make sure that that's all that that's all in there. And and the other thing I want to say is we want to grant the waivers. We wanted to grant the waivers. We gave people plenty of opportunity to send in more information, revise their application. So I don't think you need to be too concerned about us just saying no, except because of the numbers and not not to do with the the application.
Thank you.
President Keps?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this information. So I too was concerned about or confused about the the comment that was made on the supervisors' meeting today. But so Dr. Dodds, in terms of the waivers, now we're not doing it, obviously, you know, because of we're in the tier and you're not reviewing any. So were there any applications that were previously submitted that didn't get approved just because of, as you said, there weren't things completed and they were waiting on that? So I think that's really important to kind of to understand. You know, as we plan to do it, we want to make sure that we're doing the right things that won't hold us up when we're ready to get, you know, go through that process of you now at the point you're reviewing.
I don't think we had any that got refused. I think we, I think we worked with everybody several times, the ones that were problematic and got got them straightened out so that I think everybody was approved. I'm pretty sure. Is that correct?
Yes, we met with each individual entity. And if there were things that needed to change, we talked about the modifications, people made the changes, so they met the criteria and can reopen safely.
And so now, given that the fact that you are not going to be reviewing, so will we have, even though our application is complete according to what was being said tonight, so we're not going to have that opportunity to have a discussion with you because you're not even reviewing them correctly, in case there were things that we need to correct.
Yes, at this point, that's the, that's the plan. Like I said, this this kind of came, came quickly, though it may change.
Okay. And we will definitely contact you and let you know if it looks like we can sort of do the preliminary review. I I think one of the problems with that might be as things change so dramatically, I mean, it may be two months before we're back in the red, we don't know, or back in the place where we can do it. And as you know, the information changes so quickly. We might have to then regroup and redo everything over again, I think, is the thinking at this point, but we'll we'll keep you updated for sure.
Well, I appreciate that because that's really important. I think as President Keps was saying, in terms of the public understanding that we're in the process, we've completed our, you know, our application, but as you're saying, things are changing from day to day. You know, as to what may be okay, that would be approved, you know, now in this process, or when we get back into our tier that we can look at it, things may change. And so it's important to know that we're at that, we're at the will, if you will, of of the things that are changing in terms of the the criteria that's changing daily. Because I think there's a misunderstanding that or certainly disagreement in whether we would have, should have applied ahead of time or not, but there were so many other things that we need to make sure that we were ready to do it in the first place with regards to that. So so, right. So thank you, sir. Thank you for your explanation on that.
Thanks, Ms. Moen. I see Dr. I see Ms. Ford's hand up.
Thank you. I I'm trying to ascertain whether this is a discussion now or you were just wondering about a couple of questions. I have some thoughts, but should we continue with the presentation?
My my preference would be that we, if we have questions, again, just about understanding where the county is in accepting waivers and reviewing waivers, that that's such a critical point to this entire meeting, that we get clarity on that before we continue with the presentation, and certainly we'll have a vote after we're ready to to vote, but but to give the chance, because I had, I had questions, so I want to give the chance to the rest of the board if they have questions at this point.
So thanks. So to clarify, all the information, as far as we know, that is necessary for an application to be submitted is ready to go. And the decision that we have now is whether to actually submit that application. And I have some serious concerns about that, but we can talk about that later.
Thanks, Ms. Ford. Other questions on this front from the county? Dr. Dodds, Susan Clyde Rothschild, from any board member before we proceed. Again, if you could holler because I can't
Yeah, Ms. Keps.
Thank you.
Yeah. So my question is for Dr. Dodds. The schools that have the waivers that are in actual utilizing the waivers currently, is there a plan or would there ever be a plan to put them back into remote only if we continue to dive in this purple zone? In other words, is there, is there a backtrack that could happen with waivers? Or is the chance that once you have a waiver and you move forward, that you're going to be stabilized? Because it was my understanding in the past that if we were to move forward in, let's say, a hybrid plan, and we'd gotten the okay, that we wouldn't be moved back to remote. We would remain in that and then just increase the testing and contact tracing.
That, yes, that's currently the understanding that we would not move people back. But I don't want to say never because because things change. The, the the desire of everybody is to keep kids in school as much as possible. So we're going to do everything that we can to try to keep doing that. And it is possible we'll get a directive from the state that is different than than what what we're recommending. I so I don't anticipate that that will change, that that we'll say everybody has to go back to distance learning. But, you know, twenty twenty and things change fairly quickly these days.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Dodds. I think at this point, we will proceed. I do have some questions about what we do with the application that's already ready, because I'm hearing a bit of a difference between Susan Clyde Rothschild's advice and Dr. Dodds, but let's, let's just move because that's actually related to the action. So if the board is okay, Ms. Munoz, I don't want to I don't see that. Okay, good. You're, it seems like you're fine if we proceed with the other speakers, but thank you for that clarification and and we'll move forward in the presentation and then get to the decision after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Keps.
Right. Next slide, Mr. Rouse.
And like to introduce Dr. Lynn Fitzgibbons. Dr. Fitzgibbons, thank you for being here tonight. Many of us have seen your video. And I hear there's a second one, so we look forward to hearing what you have to share with us.
Thank you so much. It's nice to connect with you all. As was mentioned, I'm an infectious disease physician and do a lot of COVID work this year, of course. I'm also a product of the district and a former teacher in the district, little known fact. The the reason I'm here tonight, I think, may have just changed substantially. And I really appreciate the, I think, the real time updates from our public health department colleagues. As Susan mentioned at the very beginning, this is changing so very quickly. Really, day over day. What I want to do today is just review a few of, I think, my perspectives, but also spend perhaps a couple of minutes at the end with what I would say are the highlights from that second community update I did today, just to give everyone on this call a real sense of where things stand right now. I hope that also helps inform some of this question of will we stay in purple for a long time and and give some context for that fourteen number that Dr. Dodds mentioned? It's not lost on anyone on this call that the decisions you're all facing around education are probably the most critical and absolutely the most challenging that our society is facing this year. Of course, extremes on either end of the spectrum. Too stringent infection controls at the expense of education versus going back to business as usual education at the expense of infections, both are fraught with many, many problems. And so I think part of why I'm here to speak, and I really appreciate the opportunity, was, I think, a perspective I shared a week or two ago, which is that, given this pandemic's magnitude and longevity, how long it's gone on now, I think clearly the best approach is, of course, some compromise between these extremes with some built in capacity, of course, to pivot as conditions change. And pivoting, of course, also means pivoting when the rules change or the the guidance changes from the state public health department, as Dr. Dodds explained. Next slide, please. Just to remind everyone, as we look at numbers of case counts rising, as we look at numbers of hospitalizations, we have to remember that after an exposure, there's a period of time called an incubation period, on average, about five days, but anywhere between two and fourteen days what before someone develops symptoms. And then, of course, they get tested, and then we see that person in our case counts, but that was quite a while after the exposure, perhaps a week. And then, of course, it takes about another week for people who are sick enough to need to go into the hospital to have to go into the hospital. And what that means is after an exposure event, it's about another week until we see the case counts go up. And then it's about another week until we see the hospitalizations start to rise. Deaths are, of course, tragically a far later metric. And so what that means is, as I'm going to show you some case rates, as Dr. Dawes referenced, some case rates, we have to remember those case rates are even themselves a bit of a later indicator of what's actually happening in the community. And similarly, the hospitalizations that our governor spoke so much about yesterday, and that I want to show you some some local data with regards to. This is, of course, an even later metric. So all that to say, as you face the decisions that you're facing, and I realize many of these decisions are to some degree made for you as, as, you know, as as these rules tighten around you with regards to the waiver application decision, etc. You will absolutely have to continue whenever it is, in whatever capacity, you will still have to, I think, continue and take advantage of all the good work that I hear has been done surrounding infection control within schools. And of course, we hear a lot about different aspects of infection control, but I wanted to say clearly to this group that I think the evidence is most supportive of universal mask use, spacing within and, of course, outside classrooms, ventilation in our climate, optimizing our outdoor space, frequent cleaning of high touch surfaces, which doesn't necessarily mean everyday deep cleaning. It it means, it means what it says. It's cleaning high touch surfaces. We don't think, as we thought back in March and April, that it's a very efficient, easy way for this virus to spread through surfaces and and lots of touch. Having said that, within a classroom, we should absolutely have a plan to make sure that they're cleaned. We need to make sure, and I really, I really want this to be part of our conversations, that we have supportive, flexible sick policies for students and staff. We want to make sure that it's, of course, not punitive, but also relatively easy for our students to be removed from the classroom or perhaps to have to quarantine for two weeks and still get back to their education ideally as seamlessly as possible. And then, of course, the challenges I won't talk much more about with regards to the need for thoughtful approaches to school transportation. The current condition of our community. Next slide. Thank you. This is data that I pulled today from our wonderful local community dashboard, which is a partnership between the county of Santa Barbara Health Department, as well as Legacy Works and a variety of other community partners. But this dashboard is just overflowing with good information. And here, what you see are the daily reported case counts for Santa Barbara County. And you see it for the whole month of November. I want you to notice that back at the beginning of November, we were down in the twenties. And then over the holiday weekend, there was a single day above a hundred and forty. And the last couple of days, a little lower. Again, lots of flux in the last few days related to the holidays and reporting. But I want to give context for this slide in particular. When we talk about our county transitioning from red to orange, back when we're having those conversations in October, there's a little adjustment, but the back of the napkin number for you to all be aware of is the number eighteen, meaning all the way down. meaning all the way down, the beginning of November, when we were right around 18, we would have to have stayed there for two consecutive weeks under 18 for us to be close to qualifying to have transitioned from red to orange. Similarly, for a county of our size, and I'm just doing again the back of the napkin math, the rate that Dr. Dodds quoted is per 100,000 residents. We have about 450,000 residents for our county, so I do that math quickly, multiply by four and a half. The magic number for our county to have transitioned from red to purple, when we cross that threshold, that number was 7.0 new daily cases per 100,000 residents. And what that equates to on this graph is 31. And so 31, I don't know how easy it is for you all to see, but we have been above 31 for weeks now. We have been squarely above 31 for weeks now. And in fact, our averages are now at least double the criteria for what qualified us to flip from red to purple. I also want to give a little bit of context and just to repeat Dr. Dodds' comment. Dr. Dodds quoted that this afternoon, the state released Santa Barbara County's new case rate, the updated case rate. And remember, there is a little adjustment that's done based on how many tests are being done in the community, and that's an important adjustment. But at this point, at this point in the epidemic, I would I would encourage us to some degree to look past that adjustment and just look at our raw numbers. So our raw numbers, as Dr. Dodds quoted, is 14.1 new COVID cases per day per 100,000 residents. What is around us? The state of California, this afternoon, was given a score, their rate for the whole state, on average, 30.2. That is over four times that cutoff between purple and red. And so I just make that point when we look at this graph because our numbers are increasing, our numbers have increased a lot, and we were all very, very sad to see us transition from from red to purple. But I think as we think about the magnitude of this surge that is well underway, it's very clear to me as an infectious disease physician and also just looking at the epidemiology, that unfortunately, we are far from talking about getting back to red again. Next slide again, please. And so what impact does that have on our on our whole community? Part of the conversation now, as it was over the summer and certainly as it was in March, is healthcare capacity. While it doesn't have necessarily a direct impact on the decisions you're making tonight or the decisions ahead, I would point out that this is what has the attention of our state health department. And this is the foundation to what you've heard have been the decisions from Sacramento that Dr. Duranoso and Dr. Ansorg expressed today. This is the foundation. What has happened is our number of people hospitalized in our county has already started to significantly surge. And the rate that it has surged has everyone's attention. It is very, very worrisome. We are reassured that, again, compared to the state on average and indeed compared to all of our surrounding southern and central California neighbors, we are actually, in many ways, the last to fall. But our numbers are now rising. We're not yet at the magnitude that Los Angeles County, Ventura County, and other surrounding counties are, but we're getting there. And the other problem, of course, is that this isn't an island. As our numbers go up, as we continue to have cross county communication, travel, work, life, our numbers are going to continue to go up. And really, as a region, we are going to experience this next massive surge. Next slide, please. The this is, I think, my final slide. This was the figure, the set of figures that were shared by Governor Newsom yesterday. And I wanted to again point out that even though healthcare capacity doesn't directly correlate to your decision tonight, it is squarely the foundation upon which our state leaders, our local leaders, are going to make the coming public health decisions. On the left hand column here, you see as of yesterday, the current percentage of ICU beds that are occupied. In the middle column, you see, based on the current rate of rise, what percentage of ICU beds will be full by Christmas Eve. Pretty breathtaking. And then, in the far right column, they tell us by different regions of the state, approximately when we're going to hit that 100% rate. And of course, in Southern California, it tells us mid late December. Ultimately, what does this mean? It means that our surge is certainly underway. It means that our healthcare systems are already being strained around the state and we anticipate that strain is going to worsen. We also anticipate that after the Thanksgiving holiday, after the travel and the gatherings, as well as I truly believe our region did with regards to the sacrifices people made, we did have more gathering, more connection and more exposure of this virus than we would had it been a normal Thursday. What that means, I unfortunately predict, is that later this week, and I get to say this not as an official of the public health department, but simply as an independent ID doc infectious disease doc and one of your community members, I think it is very likely that later this week, if case counts continue to rise as they very likely will, as hospitals are impacted more as they very likely will be, I think it is more likely that Governor Newsom and the state health department will be coming out with more strict public health recommendations, guidance, or perhaps even restrictions and mandates. Can you go to the next slide, please? And this is my last slide, and I'm sorry, it has animation. You're welcome to click them all on. So clearly, the current surge of cases is accelerating. The impact on the local hospitalizations and deaths have begun and will likely worsen. Our case rates are now consistently above that purple tier, and I anticipate they will stay there for many weeks, unfortunately. I wish it were not so, but that's that's how things look. We're anticipating strains on hospital capacity that's going to drive public health policy. And we do have encouraging COVID vaccine news with EUAs, emergency use authorizations expected shortly. I think my final comment is exactly as written. Even in the context of all this, even as a hospital based healthcare worker, I would encourage you that in continuing to plan to safely resume in person learning for our schools would still be a top priority. Ideally striving for perfect mask adherence, distancing, small class size, and the use of outdoor space. And as we planned for this, I realized that some of these decisions may simply be made for us by public health restrictions and rules. But we we should be ready to adjust as these guidance changes, knowing that it is not going to change forever. And as Susan pointed out, this is a rapidly changing situation with vaccines on the horizon. I do see the end in sight. With that, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fitzgibbons, Dr. Dodds, Susan. As always, we cannot thank you enough for your support and being our partners in this challenging time. It's I think, like President Capps mentioned, everything else right now seems a little futile, but we're going to move on with this information that we wanted to to share with you today. In light of the updates given by doctors, we wanted to give you an update as to how these COVID cases have impacted our small cohorts, which you all know have been in place since September. To date, we have had five staff members and four student COVID cases in Santa Barbara Unified. All cases have been in high school small cohorts. As a result, we have had to temporarily close four small cohorts and one district office because of the potential exposure. But we have followed all the precautionary safety measures. And to our knowledge, no one has contracted COVID at our school sites or in our district offices. You can see on this slide, I know it might be a little small, but you can see that the protocol guidelines we follow to screen students, we include screening of temperatures, contacting parents if there is a fever or if fever is detected, consulting with district nursing and, of course, public health to determine next steps in either to isolate or test or return the students to school. Similarly, for employees, we also have daily screening protocols in place. Any potential exposure or symptom or positive results are reported immediately to the direct supervisors and moved. The employee might have to be moved to an isolation space. Supervisors then contact their district nurse, who then consults with public health to determine the next steps, which could include possible quarantine of the staff and or students. And of course, with our very, our very own in-house expert, Dr. Wagonek, assisting the principals and the staff with communication to their school communities. Next slide, please. We also just want to share that Superintendent Maldonado has been has highly prioritized the the need to be as inclusive, as transparent as possible in this process. And she, as a result, put together a reentry task force, which we have been meeting with consistently. The last time we met with the reentry task force was right after we had gotten the news of moving back into the purple widespread tier. We had a conversation with them at that point where they got to share with us the their pros and cons for elementary applying for the waiver. And some of these pros and cons, as you can see here, these, these are the ones out of our seven groups that we had in the breakout sessions. These are the ones that came up more than once, or there was a pattern for from this reentry task force, which, by the way, is made up of all stakeholders, including principals, administrators, teachers, classified staff, and of course, our parents. So some of the pros that you can see here, things that we've already heard previously in this presentation, public health tells us that waivers are allowed safely in elementary, that younger students need to be in person, that their interactions for academic and social emotional reasons far outweigh any other concerns that we may have. Any in-person learning will help prevent further learning loss for our students. And then, of course, that pro that parents do have a choice to not return their children to in-person learning, if that's what they choose or that is what's right for their families. As a district, we are ready and prepared to keep everyone as safe as possible. And obviously, in consultation and hand in hand with public health, we will wait to see how we can move, continue to move forward when it's safe to do so. Some of the cons, obviously, the health risks and concerns that that may that weigh heavily on everybody involved. The staffing shortages that could occur due to someone testing positive or exposure. Concerns that we are in the purple widespread level. And obviously, that we got a little more information and and guidance around what that meant to tonight. Other concerns that adults and teenagers not obeying these guidelines can put others at risk, including those elementary students going back and potentially going back in hybrid. The single most important item that came up most often as a pro, however, was the importance to have younger students back in school for overall, for their overall, overall well-being. And I think it's something we have heard that we are all interested, and that is our goal. Next slide, please. So we have presented to the board in in past board meetings, our reentry plan, our protocols. We have shared those, the school sites have shared those with their school communities. And tonight, just to kind of give us a further example with more details, we have invited our very own principal, Casey Kilgore, from Franklin Elementary to share with us what she has been preparing and planning in collaboration with her incredible team and something that is similarly happening across our district and our elementary schools. So I'd like to invite Casey, are you with us?
Yes.
Thank you, Casey, for joining us. Go ahead and take it away.
Good evening. Thank you. So as you can see on the screen here, we were able to, actually, in August, we started to walk around and look at different entry points so that we could have cohorts separate but on the same property. So all the colors indicate a different group of students who would use different entry and exit gates, classroom, bathrooms, and a recreational area. So for instance, in the purple, the darker purple, the X indicates where our kindergartners would enter from and entering with the temperature checks and the visual checks as well. The classrooms where they would go, the bathrooms they would use, and then recreational area. It was also, if you can see all the different Xs, it made it that our entries would be six entries throughout our campus, which would allow us to have cohorts in different areas of the school and all designated bathrooms for those areas, recreational areas for each of those cohorts. So even though they would all be on our school grounds, at the same time, they could definitely have different areas to have recreational activities and separated bathrooms and entries. The advantages we saw were able to bring as many students back as possible, able to have separated areas for recreational activities to continue and to be able to separate the bathroom use. And the one negative that one of our parents brought up to our attention was with so many entry and exits with families with multiple siblings would definitely get their steps in as they had to walk throughout the whole entire layout of the school. But they were definitely willing in order to do that in order to keep it safe. So that's just an example of how we can separate but still have as many students on campus and continue instruction in person as safely as possible.
Thank you so much, Casey. We so appreciate all the work and going above and beyond from all of our principals and and teachers and staff members, of course, and also our parents. Next slide, I think at this point, I am going to hand it back to Dr. Wagonek.
All right, thank you, Ms. Escobedo. So I want to start out by saying that I do appreciate Ms. Kilgore and Ms. Escobedo going over the safety protocols that we have. And Ms. Kilgore has really taken the bull by the horns in in planning for return. And so even as we sit here perhaps disappointed, I think it's okay to say that we are, we're currently sitting in a disappointed space based on the information that we learned today about our ability to immediately apply for a waiver. We are not deterred. And throughout this pandemic, Santa Barbara Unified has been committed to following the science and working in partnership with Santa Barbara County Public Health, following the state guidelines, even when that has been met with criticism for not moving perhaps quickly enough. But but we have stayed committed. And so since September, it's important to point out that our health and safety protocols have been put to the test through our small cohorts and our athletic pods. They have proven to be effective. There, as Ms. Escobedo said, there's not been one known case of COVID-19 being spread on any of our 17 campuses, despite having folks on campus who were positive at the time. And that's been because of this commitment that we've made to to And that's been because of this commitment that we've made to to being safe and preparing. So we can confidently state that we are ready to safely welcome students back to campuses in a hybrid model and therefore prepared to submit our waiver application in consultation with Santa Barbara County Public Health. That time is not right now, but when that time comes, when the curve flattens, when the metrics turn around, we'll be ready to do that. And so with that, I want to go back through the guidance here that is proposed. Pardon me, I'm gonna look to my other monitor to read. So given Santa Barbara County Health Guidelines, including the update that we just heard and the progress that's been made in small cohorts and and all of the feedback that we've heard from our stakeholders, taking safety into consideration in the name of learning continuity for our students, we're seeking the board's guidance in deciding one of the following options. Number one is a non-starter at this time. But I will read it anyway. In purple, widespread tier reopening elementary grades via applying for an elementary waiver, remaining in distance learning at the secondary level. Number two, in purple, widespread tier reopening elementary grades via applying for an elementary waiver after consulting with public health once the metrics have been stabilized. And that was an option that we added just this afternoon. Number three, in the purple widespread tier, remain in distance learning for all grades for as long as we are in purple. And then number four, once we're in red, the substantial tier or better, reopening our K through 12 campuses on January 19th with a hybrid model if we're permitted to do so. So I do appreciate the frankness with which Dr. Fitzgibbons stated where we are and we know that number four is really off the table. But as we've been practicing balance between optimism and reality. So the Stockdale paradox. So with that, Ms. Capps, I'm going to turn it over to you for questions, discussion and decision making. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention.
Thank you, Michael Wagonek. Thanks to the team. I really appreciate it. And I just had a couple of questions on the cohorts before we kind of go back to the question of the waiver, because Ms. Escobedo, you gave a lot of good information about, you know, the four students that have have had COVID, no, no evidence that it came from school and the five staff members. Can you give the overall total of how many? What's the context? How many students have been back on campuses in some shape or form? So four out of how many? Or if Dr. Wagonek knows that, anyone who knows.
We have had over 1,000 students on campus to it for varying lengths of time, because as the board recalls, we rolled out our cohorts over time with the first starting the third week of September. But ultimately, we were pushing 1,100 students when we when we halted opening new cohorts.
Yeah. I mean, that's a pretty stunning accomplishment. So thank you for clarifying that. And because we are discussing an elementary waiver, are you able to discuss ages? Just roughly, are these teenagers the four or are these elementary students?
Are for students who have tested positive. Now, these are only students who've been on our campuses participating. We're all in high school.
I understand that that doesn't surprise me either. Thank you. And generally, and the teacher, the staff, do we know? I I understood one update, a staff member who had COVID was somebody who hadn't even been on campus. So it was probably very unlikely contracted. Is this all the five staff members you mentioned, are they? Were they on campus or they do we have that information?
So those five, all the numbers that we provide are individuals who have been on campus. We don't get informa-, I mean, we hear of others who are not at work or on campus, but we don't include those in our numbers because they're not impacting our cohorts directly. So no. And and I'll clarify, two of those were actually elementary school, working in elementary school, and the other three were high school.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'm just trying to get a sense. This is a great opportunity, but almost sort of a temperature check here. So of the of the 1,000 or so students who've been on campus, would it, is it roughly half are elementary? Or two-thirds or one-third rather?
No, it would be lower only because we have athletes. So so when we include the athletes in that number, we're closer to pushing 2,000. And I would say we are probably around maybe 350, give or take, elementary students.
Okay. And how are they doing? Have we seen evidence of, you know, improvement on test scores? Those who've had the opportunity to come back? I mean, we certainly all want that. Are we seeing, you know, I I can speak anecdotally from the parents I've heard of who are just so thrilled that their their child is back in a cohort for various reasons, special ed, etc. But have we seen any metrics to reflect that?
Ms. Escobedo, do you want to respond?
Sure, of course. A great question, President Capps. Yeah, and it is anecdotal data right now. As you all know, elementary had their parent conferences right before, right before Thanksgiving break. So we are in the process of collecting that that hard data so that we can plan for next steps intervention supports for our students. But anecdotally, we can say principals have shared not just information about attendance, which obviously was really important, but but very specific examples of, for example, a special ed student who had never logged on to Zoom until he joined a cohort and now is daily being supported daily by not just the learning center at the small cohort, but also with, you know, with the teacher being logged in daily. Also, reporting, our principals are reporting that emotionally, the students that are on campus coming in on a daily basis for their small cohorts, they are there early, sometimes 30 minutes before school starts and they are, they they don't want to leave. And so they're enjoying and and just doing as normal as possible back in their environment that they feel comfortable in. And I believe, again, attendance was definitely something that was more less anecdotal and has been more data driven that they have been able to see that that has increased. And also, obviously, the the ability for the teachers to to provide that more differentiated support to the students because they are getting the additional help in the small cohorts. So those are some examples. I know that Sean Carrie has also some information. So Sean, I don't know if you'd like to share for secondary as well?
I'll just add that the qualitative feedback is very similar to what Ms. Escobedo has characterized for elementary. We do have some quantitative feedback from the secondary schools, not so much based on test scores as on grades. So we've had two marking periods and we have one this week as we speak. And we have seen some really promising data on grades and GPAs from students who participate in small cohorts at Mark II, which is the end of October. And we're eagerly going to be looking at some data following this week's entry period, marking period.
Thank you. And so just to follow on here with cohorts and I, Dr. Wagonek Hughes, we're disappointed. I certainly feel the disappointment in this virtual room here. But understanding, certainly after listening to Dr. Fitzgibbons, the severity of what we're dealing with, can the cohorts continue? I just want to make that very clear for the public. And Susan Klein Rothschild, if you need to weigh in here, can they continue? And can they expand under this current situation exactly the way we are today?
I think Dr. Dobbs can certainly add to this. But my understanding is at this point in time, the small cohorts can proceed under the guidance for small cohorts. Again, we're working and operating in a situation where things are changing. And as there are changes, the governor and the state may come with new guidance and we will follow that. But at this point in time, my understanding is a small cohorts can can move forward. And may I just add that my earlier comment about in consultation with public health, my intention was to say that the Sartre Santa Barbara Unified School District can make a decision to prepare an elementary waiver application and consult with public health about when it'll be accepted and be reviewed and revised. So I'm saying the same thing Dr. Dobbs did. Maybe I didn't say it so eloquently, so I apologize if it wasn't clear. But but that you would consult with public health, at what point can we? Because it's really based on the data and the science.
Thanks for that clarification. So anyone of the professionals, health professionals could answer this. But I know, again, that the the data is compiled, compiled just 18 and under. But can we tease out? Because I'm just, again, hearing anecdotally of a lot of cases of teenagers who are contracting COVID and might not be adhering to the guidance set forth here tonight and and have been for months. So is anyone can elaborate on that because I would love to change that and anything that we can possibly do even this evening to try to change that and and make this correlation to be of what is happening amongst our teenagers. And and we've already had a lot of focus on Isla Vista. But can you give any information or tease out again without without, you know, breaking any rules about ages? But what what's happening with our teens right now? And how is that hindering us from moving forward to reopen schools?
Sure. Peggy, would you like me to take this one? Yeah. So with COVID-19, we think, I mean, there's, there's no, there's no magic breakpoint. But we do think of adolescents and teenagers as a different epidemiologic group, of course, than than younger kids. The science behind why we think younger kids may perhaps actually get this less frequently, perhaps get lower viral loads and also perhaps transmit it less efficiently is really fascinating. But I think it's enough to say all those things are really being better understood. But they all really are looking like they're true. I would say that teenagers, and teenagers would say this, are many adults. And so what do I mean by that? I mean that the 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 way that teenagers acquire this infection and perhaps manifest this infection is perhaps much more like a young adult in their early twenties than it is like a seven-year-old. So that's the science. The public health and transmission factor, though, I think is a really tricky one. And, you know, there are so many experts that can speak to this on on this call. The fact that teenagers in our current environment are perhaps interacting in a way that is transmitting this virus, this virus could be viewed as an argument to, you know, to 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 not bring them back on campus. But I've heard a very intelligent counterargument, which of course is at this current moment, so many teenagers are certainly interacting in the absence of the structure of of school. And, you know, and and that that itself may be a factor in some of the transmissions. So what's the solution? I think the solution is, I think, to remember that teenagers are going to transmit this to one another. And many outside of even us knowing may have already done so. Education information, but also when we are able to get our teenagers back into the classroom, I think it's just a good reminder of how important having great infection control, kind of rigid practice, rigid policy around how we're going to do that. Again, under the guidance of Dr. Dobbs and the Public Health Department, it's just going to be incredibly beneficial. So I don't know, I don't know, President Capps, if that answers most of your question.
Yeah, no, thank you for for presenting both sides of that. It is a tricky one, but I appreciate that. And I, thanks for the message. My last question about a staff. Oh, did someone?
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to jump in for a minute and say that we are looking at whether it'll be helpful to specifically track different age groups. Right now, it's going to depend on what the numbers are. So if the numbers are really small, it doesn't actually mean that much. But but it is on our radar to to try to look at different age groups.
Thank you. So it's kind of switching gears here for an update. Dr. Beckio, I would love an update on hiring. I was pleased to see the 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 statement, we're ready. So can you elaborate on what that translates for hiring and where we are?
Sure, giving update, thanks for asking. So I, you know, I don't remember the last time I gave an update and where we were, but I can bring to you some exciting news. And it's worth mentioning again that we have filled all the custodian positions. So if you remember, we were looking for six and those are all filled.
Excellent.
Last, last week, our staff here continued to work and early in the week, made four offers, four additional offers for paras and those were accepted. So that brought that total up. We have two sets of interviews this week.
Dr. Beckio, just because we have a lot of.
I'm sorry, general ad para educators. So thank you. And then we have two sets of interviews this week with with for playground supervisors and para educators. And I think each of those sets has several candidates. So we could add some more staff this week. So that's the most current update for the staffing situation.
So if this were not the situation with our with our rates, we'd be ready to go January 19th in terms of hiring.
Yeah, we're on track and and these people would all be ready to be deployed by that time, too, which is really great. And I I believe the opening of schools would be, yeah, we would be ready for that. Even even if every single one of the positions is not hired, we would be able to open schools fine. We also been working hard on in the area of staffing on coverage plans. Because as you heard earlier, one of the concerns we have is when individuals have to quarantine and cannot be at the school site, what will we do? So that's actually something that we're working on. I do have a framework established. And over the next week, we're going to solidify the the plan. It's kind of a two-part plan where the the sites have a responsibility in the plan and the district office has a responsibility in the plan. So we're gonna really work hard over the next week or two on the district's implementation of that plan. So we will also be ready for coverage as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, but I am encouraged in this in this evening of challenging news that we are, that, you know, roughly 2,000 students have been on our campuses, including athletics. And so few have contracted COVID. And and also that we're ready to go when it comes to staffing capacity. So thanks to the team for all the work that that has made those outcomes possible. I will turn it over to the board to ask any questions or make any comments. Let's see, who would like to? Ms. Ford?
Thanks so much. Gosh, things have changed so much and I feel really compelled to mention that aside from the fact that I thought I had read everything that was out there about schools, I learned a lot tonight. So thank you to all the presenters. I also. I also, I, I'm so pleased with the district itself and all of the staff, the leaders, the teachers, because I remember back in October, when there was, you know, our concern about opening on November 9th and we weren't ready. And that was something that greatly concerned the board and worried us. And I think also had a lot to do with our decisions. But I don't feel that way today. I feel like the district is ready. And, and that's having visited some schools and talked with principals and teachers that just the way that people have made it their business to, to be able to flip and to be transparent and flexible. It's just amazing to me. What's most disappointing to me is this is our state and the community. I, I I think we, we made a really strong challenge and, and we weren't the only ones throughout the district and throughout the community. People have been challenging our community to, to, to follow all the guidelines outlined by Dr. Fitzgibbons and, and yet we see that there are so much that isn't being done. I, I heard yesterday that the airport experienced the largest numbers of people flying that they had since February. And so call it what you want, call it fatigue or just call it not caring, but it's, it's very hard for me at this point to feel like it would be smart even to submit the application because I see things getting worse, not better in the near term. And as a board member, I want to have a voice in when that application goes in and I, I, so I'm thinking personally that I would be in favor of us meeting again on January 5th and looking at this data, no matter how depressing or possibly uplifting it is and making the decision then.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And just a reminder, we do have a meeting December 15th. So we'll, we'll be in this conversation at least once more before January.
I don't see it. I personally don't see anything changing between now and
In terms of a decision. Gotcha. Okay. Any other board members? I'm sure they have questions. Just holler if I can't see you on the screen. Ms. Simms-Mothen.
Yes, thank you, President Capes. And thank you to everyone who continues to be in this fight with us. And sometimes celebration of all the work that's, that's going, you know, going into, to getting us to that point, including, you know, being, if you will, ambassadors for making sure that as students are safe to go back to school in the community, how every time I'm out in that community, I'm talking about how important it is, everybody's role to get our kids back, you know, safely into school. So that, that, you know, that's another role that we can play, obviously, because the community is dictating how we're getting back to school and when we're getting back to school to, to that degree. So I want to, to applaud and appreciate all the efforts that continues to go in. And as Ms. Ford said too, with regards to us being ready in November, I think the fact that we were saying, we're not ready, even though it was disappointing not to be ready. I know that absolutely that time between that time and now, it, it not only gave us extra time because we needed to hire, right? We need to get our facilities ready. We need to, you know, get our communication things out. So certainly we needed that time to be able to do that. And to be much more ready in, in, you know, even ready to submit an application, should that have been the case with, with regards to that. So I, I appreciate that. And, and the effort that it's going to continue to take not only with, within the district itself that we're doing, but as well as out there in the community. But I did have a couple of questions, just, just, just to get, you know, thank you, Casey, for your, that, that diagram that so showed so many entry ways. And so of coming in and keeping everybody safe, does that change the security, how you look at security, having those many different options coming in and out and whatever. So I don't know if Casey's still on.
Yes, yeah. I, I would say it, it won't, you know, it's, this is definitely a time period where we would just change the things, the way we do things for. So for example, with the seven entries, we would have obviously a staff that was, you know, doing the temperature checks, but then we would also use, you know, people even like our custodians or our volunteers or people who would normally do, you know, playground supervision outside and watch the children before class. They might do the, they might become our new crossing guards or they might do things like that to help us just make sure that every, you know, entrance is, every entrance is safe. And then also not allowing other adults on campus, making sure the families feel safe with the transition, that they felt like their kids, they didn't have to walk into a door, but felt safe turning their kids over, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, I appreciate that because, you know, with our focus on so much getting back safely and doing the options and making the variations so that we can do it and make it safe, that could easily be a vulnerability. So I appreciate us also keeping mindful of the security that needs to be, you know, kept in mind as, as we continue to move forward. And then Dr. Wagnit, with regards to, I think, when you were talking about some of the adults maybe have contracted or you don't know that others may have contracted COVID other than you hear it, right? Is there, do we, or do we get notified, for instance, through the contact tracing? So if, even if they're not on campus, but maybe someone else, you know, do we know how it may impact us or would it impact us at all or?
We would only in, in any of our experts can, can also correct me if I misspeak. But HIPAA, you know, really prevents us from knowing any of that and we, but we would be notified, I am certain, if, if someone tests positive and they had come to our campus, let's say it wasn't a staff member, it was a parent who came and, and met with one of our staff members. So that's how the contact tracing happens. And, and when I say we kind of hear about it, I also want to say that most of our folks, I mean, folks are being good. They're calling and they're notifying us. It's like, well, I'm the contact, like my boyfriend works with a guy who's positive and he was in contact. So I'm a contact of my boy. I mean, they, they really try to figure out am I going to be a danger or a safety concern if I come to campus? The same thing with our folks who aren't working on campus. They're working from home still, but they're letting us know that they're a contact or they've tested positive and they want to make sure that we know that. And we just thank them and say, you know, thanks for
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is that, is it good that people are being open and, you know, being okay to say, hey, I may have had a contact because, you know, you've often heard that people are coming and they're not sharing that they may have been in contact. So that's, that's good to know that at least that's that's happening there because this all again equates for us again, opening back up sooner. And so then my last comment would be just in terms of, you know, the application tonight to the decision that we need to, 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 to decide that. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm still at a, I'm not sure. I mean, it sounds like we're ready to do it, but it may mean the things that we're ready to in this complete application may change because of just the things that we've heard tonight and just in general, what's going on. And so is tonight the decision, I mean, it sounds like even if we don't make a decision tonight, that it's not really going to change because we still got to wait. So I mean, if we were to approve the application, we still have to wait, right? So approving at night doesn't move it any faster. Right? Is that?
No, no. And I, and I, I will say, because we pivots the word of the, of, of the pandemic, but it's the word of today is that with the new information, I mean, we're really looking for the board to give us guidance and direction moving forward. And so that's why two of those four bullets came off, came off the deck. You really can't.
Right. Yeah, I, I would, I would not necessarily say, yeah, let's go do that. I would say stay ready or get even readier with regards to that. So when that time comes, we're, we're prepared to go. So, so thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thanks, Mrs. Simms-Mothen. Dr. Reed.
Thank you, President Caps. And just to also acknowledge all the experts on this, on this call as well as our staff. I just want to acknowledge everyone in the district and all of those who've been involved in bringing our students on campus, the, the up to 2,000 students. And this comprehensive plan. And I want to really acknowledge the work that everyone has done to get us to this place. And I will reiterate as Ms. Ford stated and as Ms. Simms-Mothen is, we know we weren't ready in November and really feel that with all of the planning and all of the work that has been done, that we are in a positionality of readiness. And I really want to just kind of, my question is relational to our other elementary schools, as Casey Kilgore has framed in her mapping, have they provided mappings such as this of their school and are in a state of readiness as well? Should that opportunity arise?
Yes.
Yes, I'll go ahead and, and do that, Board Member Reed. Yes. You know, the wonderful thing about our principals is that they have been working collaboratively, sharing is caring. And so they have shared these good practices, these, these tools and shortcuts that they have brainstormed together. I, I see it in their group messages that they're constantly not just sharing maybe ideas that they got, maybe not even within the district, but outside the district from other districts that have opened up and their good practices and strategies. And so, yes, as part of their reentry plans and their communications with their, with their stakeholders and of course their reentry task force that they also have at the school sites, which includes, you know, communicating, getting, getting these updates and information out to the community as well. These are all details and pieces of that puzzle that have gotten us ready and that they presented and shared in multiple forms. Shortly after that October, that October board meeting where we realized, okay, no, we, we, we haven't communicated it enough. We are not ready. What do we need to do? And those were the things that we identified and, and they took on the challenge and together have, have addressed it. And that, that is why we can say, and that is why we were able to complete the application because those things are in place. So we could include that, which are all things that are, that are looked for and asked. That application is, is, is no easy task because they are looking for very specific things such as what Principal Kilgore just, just shared with us. So yes.
Great. So what this has revealed is just even more transparency on every level that, what every, not only what we're doing administratively, but what each school site is doing. And they have, and each of their websites, I'm sure frame this in, in a section on their website.
Yes, the principals have, have used multiple modes of communication, not just the Zoom meetings that they're having, you know, online, but also Twitter, all kinds of social media outlets. Just good old fashioned written communication, Parents Square, et cetera, et cetera. I, I've, I have been so impressed by the creativity that they've used and the outreach that they have been able to accomplish.
Thank you. And, and I just will reiterate, thank you to all of our principals for being on the ready and getting us to this place. Yeah. Dr. Beckio, also, I appreciate the work you're doing to move forward with getting what we need hired and taking care of that. And it was good to hear that we're in a much better place than we were before. And we're at the ready also to move forward should that possibility come.
Thank you. And just want to give credit to, to the staff and the HR office who's had their, this is all they've been doing. So they've been working hard at it.
Well, thank you. And thank you to HR then and all the staff, the work that they're doing. So basically my comment would be, it sounds to me like from everything that has been framed that we're ready, as Ms. Sims-Mothen said, where we can only get readier. There's, there's always something that's coming up every day and that we keep on that, which it seems like we are with these amazing experts providing with us with this information. And I also feel that we can't make a decision at this point in terms of the waiver because we're not in a position to move forward with a waiver. So but we're ready when the time comes. So I feel in my thinking it's like, and, but then every day is different. So I really think we need to judge it as we move forward in the next iteration of time where we're able to make the, the decision when we have even more information, which we will with Governor Newsom potentially giving us more information that's up to date in the next few days. So that could change all of this too. I think the acknowledgement today for me is to acknowledge all the work that our district has done to get us to this place for us when it's safe and healthy, based on public health protocols that we're ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Reed. Ms. Simms-Mothen.
Yes, thank you. I want to also, you know, as my fellow board members have, fellow board sisters have said, you know, recognize the work of everyone at the school district level, the teachers and our parents in terms of, you know, preparation. I did tour San Marcos High School with the superintendent. Sorry, before the holiday and saw, you know, it was good to see the layout of the classroom and how, you know, the everyone there is, is just, you know, planning for, for when we are able to, for example, open the high schools. And I was looking forward to, you know, seeing the elementary schools, but also, you know, I'm concerned about the, us being in the purple tier and such. The input from the parents and the teachers, you know, just to reassure, you know, folks that all of the emails do cause a lot of what do you call increased awareness in terms of, you know, because the teachers, they're in the frontline, right? They're, they're in the classroom, whether it's with the hybrid learning or preparing for having students in their classes. I am concerned about, you know, the teachers are still asking about like Plexiglas in the classrooms and I don't know, I wonder if there was, you know, any further discussion of that, of using Plexiglas as the teachers have requested, you know, I don't think. Let's see, I'm going blank. Oh my goodness. Sorry, I have a little bit of a head cold. Yeah. Has that been considered further?
We, we have talked a lot about Plexiglas and gotten input on that. And I'm hoping I can put Dr. Dobbs on the spot to talk about about Plexiglas as one type of mitigation, given that we are using many others. And I know Doc, Superintendent Maldonado talked about the Swiss cheese effect and, and Susan also has spoken about that. So either Dr. Dobbs or Susan have talked about the public health guidance on Plexiglas before, and then I can give follow-up.
I can start and Dr. Dobbs can join. How does that sound? Just so you know, I checked with our environmental health services staff who have expertise in that area. And they said certainly it is an option. There are some positives and some negatives and pros and cons using Plexiglas. One of the factors with Plexiglas is that cleaning becomes a challenge. The frequency and keeping up with cleaning is, is an issue. It is not always easy to do that. And that adds a burden in some ways. And if we look at the school-based guidance from the California Department of Public Health, they list a number of different options that can be used to help create separation and distance between students. Plexiglas is one option, physical distance, the direction of desks and chairs. So people aren't facing each other. So they say there are lots of ways to mitigate transmission between students and Plexiglas is listed as one option. It is not a panacea though. Our environmental health folks say that there are some challenges with that. Dr. Dobbs, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I haven't seen much solid data about Plexiglas. There's definitely data.
There's definitely data about masks. There's definitely data about social distancing. There's data about face shields in addition to masks. I just haven't seen a lot of, of information about Plexiglas. And certainly it should not take the place of distancing. So as a supplement, yeah, it's, it's, you know, every little bit probably helps. But you can't be two feet apart and think Plexiglas is going to help prevent the virus. It's, that's still not a safe environment. So I think more barriers is better if it's reasonable.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for letting me. Thank you for being here. So you can address that from your perspective. And what we've really talked about is we have all these layers. And that's the Swiss cheese effect. So we, we have masks, we have distancing, we have hand washing, we are using outdoor space as much as possible. And, and we do have the face shield. So every single staff member and student has the face shield. And in my mind, that's like a portable Plexiglas that you can put on with your mask. And so what I've also heard is, as we've done our research is they break really easily. You think of like seven and eight-year-olds moving about and they knock them over and they break and, and they are hard to clean. So we had to, we have had to weigh that and we feel like the science indicates that the steps that we're taking for safety don't require the Plexiglas, given every other step that we've taken.
Dr. Reed, I don't know, were you going to say something?
Did you have a question about this, Dr. Reed?
Well, the only thing I would say is that in having the opportunity to go to the campuses when, when we are each board member have an opportunity to go and see how the, how the campus is going to bring back cohorts. I heard from many different teachers from the different campuses that I went to saying that they would like the option of the Plexiglas glass. So I just, I'm just playing devil's advocate in that there were teachers that felt that for their particular situation, that they would like to have that opportunity to use it. And in that moment of time, I guess that was prior to making this decision that you've made now that they were given that option if they so chose. And it worked in their classroom. That's, that's it. I appreciate that comment. I don't think we have ever. And Dr. Beckio has done the negotiations with SBTA. I don't know that we ever said that Plexiglas would be an option. But I also think we have to remain flexible in terms of what we do and the safety measures that we take. So.
Ms. Ford, did you want to weigh in on this topic?
Just because when I visited Montezero Union, they had Plexiglas dividers in between most of the students and most of the classrooms, which were mostly outdoors. And so I just texted with Virginia Alvarez about it. And she said that they've been breaking very easily and they're not replacing any of them. They bought more tables and chairs to increase social distancing.
Thanks for that update. Other questions about this or Ms. Munoz, you wanted to convey?
Yes, I also, you know, appreciate all the, the information about hiring, you know, of new staff and pleased that that's coming along well. Is there, you know, I'm sure you've thought about this, is there in terms of a delay in starting, you know, going back to school with the waiver and so forth? Will there be some provision for the folks that are hired, that are new hires? You know, would there be other?
We're going to deploy the new hires to our school sites for, for small cohorts.
Great. Awesome. Okay, awesome. And I also, right, I wanted to, of course, you know, bring up like in terms of the cohorts and the amount of students that we have, like, you know, obviously, we don't want any students or staff to be positive for COVID. But in given the numbers, you know, it's really impressive and just testament to how much the school district has prepared and continues to prepare daily. And, you know, and as some of the emails that we receive, you know, in the meantime, the downside of not being able to have the waiver approved at this time is that, you know, as our health experts on the panel have said, you know, that the vaccine may be available to, you know, to folks in the community and different with the healthcare workers. And then we'll see what, if it's going to be available to the teachers and such, because primary importance to take care of, of our teachers and, and staff, you know, with the school district. And, and I know that all our principals and the superintendent and assistant superintendents are, are thinking that way. So yeah, so it just, you know, gives us more time in terms of preparation. And then hopefully, you know, our numbers will be able to stabilize. I, oh, I was also going to say, I'd be interested, you know, to see what is available with data with the different age groups, you know, as time goes on. And I'm sure we'll, we'll be seeing that with this. But no, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Dodds and, and Susan for being available to us for your expertise.
Thanks, Ms. Munoz. And just to reiterate her point, I, yeah, the, you know, even just watching Dr. Fauci on the Sunday news shows this weekend, the more data we can have about our students, our elementary students here would be extremely helpful as we make these decisions. So thanks for showcasing that that could be coming forth. I think we're ready for a motion if Mr. Rouse wouldn't mind pulling up the four options there. We certainly have the option to table, given the new reality that no one wanted, but it is our reality and it's disappointing, but it is. It's all about safety. It's all about data and it's all about partnering with our public health experts. So I, I'm suggesting a modification that I'm doing here on the fly of number two, because I do feel that that's the consensus of the board. That I think it would be nice to give an actual concrete direction with a motion and a vote to our staff and to the public who have, who are joining us tonight to understand at least where we are at this juncture. So it would be a modification of number two, which would be to reopen elementary grades via applying for elementary waiver. Again, after continuing consultation. And I'd add the board so that we do have the opportunity, as Ms. Ford suggested, to convene as we are this evening before again, that waiver is, that it's all ready to go, but before it's actually submitted. Any other suggestions to my modification for a motion? Ms. Ford?
I'm not sure why I would make the motion then if the board's going to meet again to make a decision.
It's, we could have it either way. I just thought we do, we do have this on action agenda. So we could, we could table it, but that to me doesn't quite capture the direction that we do want to move forward with the waiver when it's time for that, when the county is ready to accept it. And that seems to be the consensus I'm hearing from the board. Of course, we don't want, we want to have the opportunity to weigh in one more time, but but a motion just could convey, I'm sorry, tabling the whole entire motion could convey just a lack of, of action. But, but you raise a good point. If someone else has a feeling either way, I'm certainly open.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine to, to agree with Ms. Ford with regards to table. And that's kind of where my mind was, is just table this, because we do still have a, because even making this motion doesn't move it forward in the sense that we were trying to do that, you know, with submitting the application, given the information that we know now. So I'm, I'm wanting to table it until we have December 15th. Is our next meeting, meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Just again, those, those who are part of this conversation understand why we're tabling it, but I would hate for someone in the public to just hear that we decided not to decide. That's what, that's my intention. The shorthand version of this two-hour meeting is that we just decided not to address it.
Well, I think, I think we are addressing it. I just think in terms of you know, I'm thinking in my, in my opinion, I think we are addressing it. We're not like, lack of action in terms of that. We're saying that, given on this information that we've got today, we really can't move forward because of the fact that it's not being accepted anymore. And we want to give a little bit more time, you know, to discuss it on December 15th. Now, if that can be part of the motion, so be it, you know. But I think we're just not ready to move forward because it's that doing anything, whether we make this motion or not, it's not going forward to, with regards to submitting the application. Because it's not being accepted.
I totally agree with you. Again, I just raising sort of semantics here for those 300 roughly people who are following this, but we're, have several thousand, maybe 15, 20,000 who might just see a headline. We have very conscientious reporters, but I just want to make it clear that this is not, this is, this is what the reality is from our public health, not a lack of action from the board.
Correct. Yeah. Just a matter of making that clear.
President, President Kaps?
Yes.
Oh, I also wanted to just make clear that, you know, whether we vote tonight or we vote at the next meeting is that parents will still have the option to, you know, choose to have their children in, in hybrid learning. Yeah, you know, if we apply for the waiver.
Yes, for sure. Okay, so.
Do you want to make a motion, Laura? I just, I, I've been trying to figure out a way to make a motion that actually makes sense. But my motion would be something to the effect of while we acknowledge that the schools are, the elementary schools are ready to reopen, even in purple, we're, we're not. I don't know. I don't know. It's not a motion. It's a statement.
We're giving direction to, thank you for working this out with me in real time here. We are giving, we are seemingly all on the same page, five of us, that we want to continue to give direction to the staff to be ready with an application when the county is ready to accept it. And also have one more chance to touch base, given the ever-changing environment that we are dealing with, with this virus. As opposed to, as opposed to just where we were earlier, where we were not ready to move forward on an application. It's, it's important information that the application is ready to go. Again, it's mostly semantics, but I just think that semantic, you know, how we communicate, this is extremely important. So.
Yeah, I think this is, President Kaps, I think this is a good discussion of the, the difficulty that we're having to do here. And I think that that's evident, that, that there, that the folks who are on this call are hearing the difficult that we're trying to get it right to ensure that, you know, that it's clear what we're, what we're trying to do. And it's not easily just, you know, based on the four options that we have, that clearly doesn't really fully represent what we're trying to say here, right? So I, I know we're working it out in full time. And I think this is good discussion that they're able to hear that with regards to the difficulty. And I also think that Susan had something in the chat that may help us with the language. Susan, with regards to when they open, which it may be similar to what we're saying.
But that actually doesn't help me because it does, that doesn't acknowledge that the board wants to have a voice.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, I think this discussion is saying a lot about, you know, that we're sharing out here in this discussion and all those things. And so if we're going to, if we're about making a motion to make that clear, then we'd have to obviously revise number two, which is the most likely, what we're trying to do, adding that. So in consultation for an elementary waiver, after consulting with the board, the public health, once the metrics have stabilized, you know, something like that, to have the voice, that we're not making a decision to move it until we consult with the board and public health in consultation, as we have been.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I mean, Susan Klein Rothschild is suggesting the board, quote, the board wants to move forward with the elementary school waiver when the public health department is ready to accept and review the application and the board is consulted again. Or something to that effect. Does that work?
In advance of, you know, the submission of the waiver. So that the fact that the board is consulted in advance.
I mean, my, thank you. My vision would be that as soon as public health is, let's hope it's sooner than later, is ready to accept waivers. We have another meeting like we are this evening. We call emergency meeting. We do it as quickly as possible. We don't let more time delay and we're ready to go.
So that's better than a motion. It's a direction.
That's the, I agree that, that you will give us direction.
Yeah.
To do that and that that would be the motion that we're given direction to take those steps as soon as we are able to.
Yeah. Okay. So the consensus I'm hearing is to just provide that, we've provided that direction and we don't need a vote. And then it's understood as to why we're not taking a vote that we are absolutely prepared to do. Is that, is that why?
Add the date of, you know, the discussion on 12/15, if you want to add that on, in the, in the direction of staff to, to to bring that back on 12/15. So that's clear to the public as well.
Yeah, I, I certainly agree that that's a lot, that's much more clear. And then that's something that we can, you know, because we're going to be asked, what did, why did, what did you vote on exactly? And that's, you know, it's better the direction. I like that better.
Okay, excellent. So everyone's clear in public health. It's, it's clear we have a good communication and we will be in daily contact. Ms. Ford, did you have another comment?
I do. I absolutely understand the concern that you have about how any action or inaction can be interpreted. And I'm wondering if the direction, I was just playing around with some words, but if the direction would say something to the effect of given the importance of elementary students getting back to school as soon as possible and the readiness of all of the schools to do so, the board directs staff to continue to refine the waiver application and present it to us on December 15th.
Yeah. Apologies. Certainly with this, just because it is that important pandemic. So again, I would argue if we're, if we're actually wordsmithing a direction, then then why not make that a motion?
That's why I'm saying, keep it simple, give direction. Keep it simple, give direction.
I think it's clear that we want to move forward with the waiver that's already been completed as soon as public health is ready to accept it. But we do want to have the opportunity for the public to hear the latest and the board to decide before we move forward with that application. Just begin, again, to have another meeting exactly like this one when public health is ready to accept and review applications for waivers.
Okay, no motion.
No, I think, yeah, I think we just give direction.
We did it.
We hear your direction and we understand your direction.
You understand. Hey, that's a good one.
Okay. We got it. Okay. And anyone who wants to write that down, put it on the website. You can do that. Okay. With that, unless I would, do you want to give the opportunity if anyone has any final comments or questions? I think we're good. Thank you again to the public for, for joining us this evening. Unless things change, our next meeting, our next, our next regular board meeting will be the 15th, two weeks from tonight. And it's, thanks for the healthy conversation. Everyone stay well. Let's bring our numbers down. Let's defy the odds that were just conveyed on those charts. Let's defy the odds that were just conveyed on those charts and turn this around. Thanks, everybody. This meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-five.